It's just a thinning project. And the comments that came in, all these radical environmental groups, new ones that I've never even heard their name. I don't, I don't know how the Forest Service gets anything. Fortunately, they're doing a lot of this stuff. They do it's full exclusion.
You're not aware of that?
Is there anybody looking for a place to live?
Unlikely.
Single person or a young couple without any...
They're all families.
Cats, I know where there's a place. Only big view, one bedroom, kitchen, really nice place, wash and dryer, all utilities paid for fifteen hundred dollars. Am I right, Danny?
My sister-in-law's house down in California, and she's renting it out for twenty-five-hundred a month.
Holy moly.
And it's not a, it's not a very nice house. Well, we don't have it so rough up here.
Oh, yeah, it will be.
Yeah, everybody makes a hundred grand or more down there. Crazy.
I talked to Ben Espeland, he's trying to hire twenty people. He wants an assistant manager. What to tell you, man? They have a heck of a time hiring twenty people here unless they quit paying them unemployment.
Well, the governor just took us out of that federal unemployment deal.
As of June first or the end of...
So I think all that's gonna change here pretty quick.
Still nowhere for them to live.
There's a lot of them that live here, though, that aren't... Yeah, the living thing is...
Who's living?
I think we could put a bunch of containers on...
Find some time to do that.
You know, I'd looked at doing that one time, not containers, but for motorhome camping, because motorhomes have to have a big concrete pad and all that stuff, you know? And the insurance premium a year was twelve thousand bucks.
That was your monthly income?
Damn, man, that takes a big bite out of the profit.
There's a guy on West Mountain Road that I didn't realize him, but he'd been living in there for about a year. He's just got a gray container, opens the big doors, and that's where he lives.
But that's cold when it's thirty below.
We can't even imagine, can you imagine the electricity? Get any heat into it?
Nope. Okay, we're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next item is not an action item. This is a workshop on Valley County's vision for recreation and developing a robust recreational program. And I have to say, starting off here, is that since we hired Larry, we have gotten very robust just in the last few years. We brought Dan on to help him with it, and we're getting there, I guess. Guys have an awful lot of things that you gotta deal with and handle, and I, that's all I had to have. I don't know what else you guys wanna talk about.
I think part of it was, you know, the conversation was evolving as, you know, things were changing, and obviously, you know, I went back and shared a document that was put together in 2016 that was talking about parking issues on county roads from people who are recreating in different areas and the concerns that were raised back in 2016. And I think it goes farther back. I mean, you can say, you know, we've been shifting from resource-based economy to a recreation-based economy in Valley County for the last twenty years. So, you know, I think, I've talked to Pat, I've talked to Larry, I've talked to, you know, different folks along the way, and I think we just wanted to kinda have a conversation about what do we see as we move forward? You know, there's conversation going on around, you know, a potential levy for basically access and all of the things that we've been discussing. And Larry, you've been involved with a lot of this from the get-go as far as access issues, and I think that there's probably a lot more access issues that we're not looking at right now as well. So, I think, you know, what do we, what do we see for the vision of this thing going forward? You know, we've got roads that we've lost access on right now, you know, the parking issues that we're seeing in the winter and the summer at different areas. You know, I think the Trident issue really ignited people here and said, you know, the county needs to step up and look at how can we collaborate with other entities in the area and provide, you know, this access that's diminishing? So, you know, I think that was my interest in kinda sparking this conversation and just having a bit of a conversation with all of us in one place to talk about what we think our shared vision is. You know, I, again, I think the current program has grown to meet the needs, you know, our grooming program right now in the winter is the second largest in the state of Idaho, which is very robust.
Most miles in the state of Idaho.
Yeah, and it, right now, it, we're finding out that, you know, our pinch points are parking, so we have issues with our current parking. Larry has a vision for, you know, more camping areas that are accessible around the county. I think all of these things are great, you know, we're seeing increased use on the Cabarton section, which is also something that we maintain. You know, I just see like a growing need for maybe taking our recreation to the next level as far as the department goes. Are we looking at, you know, more employees so we can move around and clean all the toilets every day, manage these campgrounds as we add more? I think that there's potentially two coming online in the next couple of years that we're talking about. So I just see a lot of additional responsibility in that department, you know, and that doesn't even begin to address the coalitions that you're a part of, Larry, and the time that you spend, you know, helping educate people on legislation and moving things through, you know, both for the Forest Service and some of the other national partners.
Well, I think we're on the edge of really, quite doubling our size, to be quite honest, but we need decisions made by people that we can't make the decisions with, which, just going over a few things we're working on right now, is the Clear Creek, designing build out. Of course, that'll also mean we're gonna have to get a grant. OK Gravel's gonna give you a deal on exactly the same type of thing, which turned out great, which, by the way, the well's out.
You call it deal? That's all a brand-new system, though, thing.
Yeah. We've got a parking lot and trail cleanup getting ready to start, replacing the tracks on Mr. Bulli, finishing the boat ramp.
Hold on, hold on, one second. Parking lot cleanup, where at?
Oh, all of our parking lots. At the end of the seasons, both seasons, summer and winter, we do a trail and parking lot cleanup.
Okay.
And that's one I really worked with to get a lot of volunteers to help, because we could not do it. We're fit, took a look at the boat ramp again at the end of Cabarton. I think we can go ahead, I'm hoping to get the Corps of Engineers, I'll take it down to the high watermark this year, and let's finish that, because we need to get that end ramp done.
Wait a minute, the end ramp, which...
At the end of that, as you pull...
Do you wanna go out further into the river?
So would you, would you see that being a gravel one or another?
Yeah, we gravelled it down to that certain point, and it's like a three-foot drop-off there, and I thought we'd just take, and I talked to the kid that helped us put in the steps. He thinks we can put eco-blocks down a little bit farther than fill it with pit run and then some fine gravel over that and have a nice ramp. We're starting to get a lot more of guided fishing trips down the river, and they don't have a way to get the boats out that way.
It's hard to get the drift boats back up that drop-off.
Exactly, and it's tough on what we have, so it'd be a great place for them to start up on recreation.
So putting in at the same access point?
Same access point. They don't leave any vehicles there.
Larry, did you guys go and look on the upper side of the bridge, that big rip ramp that goes down the river, about maybe concreting that down to make that another?
Yeah.
My concern is it's so close to the entrance to the bridge that it's gonna be a traffic jam unloading.
Well, we're still gonna be in that position with water resource, Corps of Engineers. Getting that close, we're gonna have, with a pretty extensive design, it's not expensive to do that, and I think we can spend the money. I did check with our easement, and we could actually, if we have funds, buy a grant to do it, there's a couple spots on the east side of that road, we could cut, make more parking, and there's one spot, that wet area, we could put a culvert through that, hopefully we'll have to ask Corps of Engineers, and water resources, if that's okay.
On the east side of Cabarton Road?
In the south.
Down to Warm Springs Creek, that creek that goes along there?
Yes.
That, they actually used a lot of that material there to build the bridge, to build the road up to the bridge. And there's, it goes out and kinda flattens and then drops off down to the creek, but...
Anyway, so we're looking at that, of course, we're looking at the Wallace Lane expansion, which I think that would clear that up. But Ramsey Wallace, we did, as I explained, we did get our hydrologist report back, that is in with the Corps of Engineers, our resources. And if you remember, when we put the steps into Cabarton, it took us almost three years to get permission, touchdown, so it's not like this stuff. Titus Expansion, I think we've got a pretty good agreement on that now. Even though we're gonna get an agreement to do it, fortunately, they are logging that this fall, so that helps a little bit, but we have to come up with the funds to do it, or it'll be a grant.
So you'll get the logger to come in and take all the trees out first, and then we'll just have to dig the stumps?
Yeah, and hopefully we can get them, I don't know how that works, if we can cut them low, rather than leaving the, it's better to leave the stumps up and then get them all the way out of there, or because it's a parking lot, isn't it? Please, Phil?
They usually don't do that. They don't like to get their saws that far down in the dirt.
I say grind them off?
But we could maybe hire a stump grinder, come in and grind them down to ground level.
Yeah, we'll have that conversation. Also looking at, right now, to try to spread some people out, so they made Rapid River Wild seating, that park, and some of that, but Rapid, we had a group room trail through that, but there's two loops over there, Lost Lake Reservoir Loop and then Rapid River, we're thinking about giving, that's a choice actually by the county, giving up that Rapid River Loop and changing that for no business up to Tamarack and over to Lost Tree along that top bridge right there, that'll give a giant circle, and yeah, two people around it, big project, but no reason why it can't happen.
What were the two loops up in Rapid River area? Sorry. Where were the two loops that were up in the Rapid River?
So the lower loop goes around Lost Lake Reservoir, it's about a fifty-mile loop, and then the upper loops, another thirty to forty miles, we have never groomed it, those have not been maintained at all, they're actually designed. If we ever did do it, it'd be, so it's not a difficult thing to do.
Adams County?
Yes, it's all Adams County, back over into the combination.
And Adams County helps fund all of that?
I mean, as far as...
They do, you know what I'm saying? Why are we doing it in Adams County then?
We're talking through trails, so that we can, so we have in the forest plan for snowmobiles, having known that game, we cannot add miles without giving up miles. And you'll not see the forest plan changes, in my opinion, in my lifetime, to be honest with you. So what we were talking about doing is giving up that upper loop, we can get the miles over. And Asher from Council District thinks that would be tiny when you have, don't have to work with the travel plan or anything to do that.
And that's all Forest Service, so you don't have to deal with private land?
All Forest Service.
How, can I, should I just ask you to kinda flesh out? Like, I don't completely understand what our relationship with Adams County is as far as the grooming goes. I know that you oversee, you know, the stuff that comes up from their side of the valley towards West Mountain and out of the Wallace Lane, but, you know, you just said that they don't give us any money for any of that.
And that wasn't quite true.
I was gonna say, there's grooming funds that come into Adams County.
We get early funds from everybody that ride snowmobiles over there, plus they help, they give us twelve thousand dollars to help out parking lots. And if I call them, they'll help, just by your way. But we also get fuel from Gem County.
So it's more of a regional approach at this point?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sure.
For winter, it is, yes.
Larry, help me figure out here, where's Lone Tree? I mean, does that come back on the...
That's Lone Tree.
So then it comes up back into Four Corners and back out that way?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, where does that loop?
There was a time back in Tamarack, the first phase, I can't remember what it was called, that they did have a trail that went all the way across there, and when all that kinda blew up, we lost it.
West Rock.
Because it was their responsibility to maintain. And there is some conversations going right now with Tamarack. But we wanna make sure we have it on the map, that's the main thing. It's not a matter of grooming, it's not a matter of spending money, we need it on the map before something changes.
And you should know, the last Boise Forest Coalition, there was a very heated discussion about why the Forest Service doesn't include recreation trails into their new, their new projects. And all the coalition came out, I'll send you the letter, mad or hell, basically saying that you guys have gotta include recreation and loop trails into these projects, or we're not gonna support you on all the rest of it.
And I think, I think we all know why they don't.
So the RAC, they're going after some additional RAC funding. Jennifer just reached out, Jennifer Blake reached out last week, and that'll be on next week for approval, but they're doing a bunch of trail maintenance and cleanup also, and so I think that they're looking at some of this as far as RAC grants coming forward, which will be important. You know, I didn't work with them to identify those areas that you need some help cleaning up, too.
We've been asking for some. We need to, the RAC rules need to be clarified a little bit. I'm not gonna get a RAC grant in by the end of this month, but if they're in two months, we're gonna have another opportunity. And I'm really thinking about, and I think we can, about hiring a couple snow rangers, to say the least, with the RAC grant, because they do do the work on, they'd be doing maintenance and working on our trail system, help keep our trail systems open for summer and winter. We've got a lot of summer trails, we're losing.
That's one of the conversations I wanna have, but so I'll keep it down on, we'll let you finish, and then I'll talk about what I wanna see expanded, too.
All right, so, open up that, I've got a meeting, Jimmy Williams is gonna call me tomorrow night, he doesn't know us, and I have between seven and ten P.M., that's tomorrow, saying that we're gonna have another little conversation about, about the roads, and then I'm gonna put his final letter that David had done into him, and we'll get that, get that done, and he'll get back to us right away, he said. On the, well, let's go, we're still working on that drag, the old drag, and I'm gonna talk to Kurt Miller for next Monday, having on your schedule, I've got the letter from IDPR that you have to sign to accept the grant, but I'm short money, I can't raise enough money to make that offset, there's like eight thousand dollars difference there. We'll have that discussion, if we can't do it, maybe we'll just refuse the grant.
That's for the grant award that we just got?
That's the grant that will, yeah, replace that drag, is that right? On the nineteenth, I'm hoping to have, at ten o'clock in the morning, IDL wants to be here, have that discussion about our leases, and they want us to be really prepared for it, exactly what we want, how we wanna, how we wanna work it. The director of IDL is gonna be here, that's kind of a strange discussion, they go, yeah, we want you to see what you're actually stepping into when you volunteer to do it. It'll be kinda nice to meet him, I haven't met the new director.
So is that conversation, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just gonna say, so is that conversation expanded from just the snowmobile parking leases to the inquiry that I sent to them as well, or is it still just limited to like our grooming program?
I think that discussion is gonna be whatever we wanna make it, and I think, I think anything less than that, like everything else, we need to get our ducks in a row, get signatures on the line, and move forward. Some of the, when we talk about parking lots, you remember, we've got three or four, and heels, bless them.
Nineteenth, like Wednesday?
Yeah, next week.
This week?
This week.
Oh, yeah, that's the day after tomorrow.
Oh, you're coming to that meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
So they're gonna, they're gonna try to be up here in first minute, if they want to.
When, you're gonna do it in here?
Yeah.
On the nineteenth, at what time?
At ten o'clock.
Okay.
A.M.
I will vacate.
Anyway, that's pretty much what we've got going on right now, other than, like we said, placing all B-tubes and doing, we've got a lot of maintenance to do, pitch up our buildings.
Is that mostly contracted out, or you get volunteer help for that, or a combination?
We'll be as much volunteers as we can, and out of funds, we've got, keep in mind, we have seven buildings, and do all the maintenance on them.
You have some, like, large-scale painting projects this summer, don't you?
The biggest painting project is gonna be that center building, and it's a painting, and the Cooper Mountain Club will do that, what we do is apply the stain, and then maybe all the work.
Where are we on the roof in the chimney?
I don't think we're gonna get, and I listened in on the IDPR, it's close to the line, but I don't think we're gonna get, fuck, all their funds went parks again. Again, a lot of, there's a lot of money left over, and some of it, RTP, nobody wants to apply for an RTP grant right now. Hey, Mom?
It's an RTP grant.
That's a recreational trail program by the federal government, so it's very cumbersome, monitored closely, and sometimes, four years ago, we applied for that, and costs change, and it's hard to manage those grants.
With Mary on board, is that easier?
Mary does a great job. She is, she is really helping out. I will tell you that, it was really funny when I did my presentation last Wednesday to the hot fund committee, at the end of it, the guy that leads it, I don't remember his name, he kinda surprised me, because he really, they don't really make any comments personally. At the end, he goes, that was a good job, thank you very much, we appreciate you. I'm like, great, I mean, I didn't get anything? But it was just kinda nice to have a comment made like that, because Mary put it together, and it was really, it was really concise, so I think that's what they appreciate.
Larry, on the RTP grants, once you get the application kinda done, and I know it's an arduous task, you can use that same application for different grants, can't you?
Yeah, you can. The states, the state, IDPR's website has the RTP and the, all the other slew of grants that they have on there, and it's, it's almost the exact same process, the grants, there's a federal...
Yeah, language is...
Yeah, there's a couple of additional requirements for the RTP stuff that the IDPR grants don't have, but it's exactly the same verbiage, and it's, it's a very similar form.
Yeah, I gotta have the advertising in by the end of this, end of this week, if you've got an RTP grant. Anyway, if we get DF Development, those that we're talking with them, and we get IDL going, it's gonna be just a wonderful summer, it's gonna be great.
What did you guys decide last weekend with DF? Was there any give and take, or what did they want for all this?
So, there was some confusion on that, Jimmy really didn't realize that he had a meeting here, he thought that we were just gonna get back to him with a list, and so we had that discussion, and we made a list with, kind of a list of priorities, and then we have, we have two trails that we think we actually own, RS 2477, so we're gonna look a little deeper into that, and there's two of them that, and I still didn't get over to Patty Glass, I wanna, so, after I talk to him tonight, I'm sending him the list, very generic list, and then he's gonna come back to us and say, this is what we want to do for that.
That's, that was my question, what do they want for giving us these roads? And we have not got to that point yet.
I, I'm gonna make sure we are to that point. It's time, no more beating around. And I actually asked him, I said, you know, we've been working together for a long time, I need you to give us, he said, you will. Hopefully, we're gonna get just those top three.
As I say, Larry and Cindy and I all had a conversation about it, it kinda expanded out on the conversation that we had three weeks ago, when we last met with Jimmy, and prioritized, like, what are the easy, the low-hanging fruit pieces, and then what are the, kinda the ones that make most sense right now, without adding, you know, tons of mileage on, or...
Well, to me, it really depends on what they want. If they wanna be able to take down the twenty-acre size parcels and sell them, then that's gonna be an issue, I think, for a lot of people, because there's some code, state code, that we have to follow, the original parcel thing and all that, so...
There's a lot of our ordinances that would not allow some of that, and some of that are things that we're currently working on right now in the Road Advisory Group to improve and enhance.
I think, I think they understand. I was surprising, because I always thought red, red would be the one, would be the most difficult for us until, I were kinda talking about, there'd be no opportunity out there to develop. It's right up and down on each side, it's a ridge road, it gives them a little, it would give them a little bit of access, but other than that, I would say that's low-hanging fruit, and yet it's probably the most important one we have for connecting the southern part of the county to northern part of county. That is, I would say that's our top priority at this point. And also comes out on West Mountain Road at A, where would be the incredible place for a summer and winter parking lot. Paying that, every time we add a parking lot, adds a cost, I'm not getting a, I know I nag about this, it's not getting a grant and building it out, and we have to maintain it, we have to have the ability to plow it, we have to have the ability to keep it clean and organized during the summer, but if you're a true believer like I am, if you build it, they'll come and it'll pay for itself. I just wanna be real clear about that, every time we do this, there is a cost involved.
Well, and the goal is to get it kinda like Wellington, where it's gonna not only pay for itself, but...
Pay for itself.
Make you a little money to use somewhere else.
And that would be a perfect spot for RV campground, right at the end of that A right there, oh my gosh. So that, that's the next thing I think we need to step up a little bit, I know this conversation's come up like four or five times in the last eight years, right now, everything we have is, people are paying on a volunteer basis. I think we need to have fees, hard fees, and I don't know how that affects, that would have to come from our attorney, and a lot of other things, but it's, it's a process to make that stuff up. We've got a lot of outfitters using our facilities and aren't paying a thing for them, and right now, they don't have to, legally, they don't have to.
Well, and I think we are coming to that, I know, some of the camping spots on the lake, it's thirty-nine dollars a night.
Isn't that something?
Yeah. And so it's like, wow, we're way low in some of these, maybe that can be Brian's next big task.
Well, you know, Elton, I don't think you were here when we were talking about it, we were talking about the fact that right now, all of the state parks, campgrounds in Valley County are booked for the entire season. They have a waiting list for Pond Road, so they have a waiting list for the ones down here on Cascade. So, I mean, I think that's a pretty clear, you know, sign that we need some more campgrounds in this area.
And, and, Misses, we're not talking about going into competition, we're not talking about having full facilities with showers and things like that. You know, if we have a well, a ball of toilet, I think we're doing that. That's, that's actually the type of camping that a lot of people are reaching out for. And, put my other hat on, I really like getting people off of forest roads, and I'd rather have them in hardened campgrounds, off of repairing areas, that's something we can really take care of. And that Clear Creek, I love that one, because right now, everybody's shooting up from every place else, going through the private property and stuff, that's a trailhead, a huge trailhead. That's what we need.
And it is busier than crazy in the summertime.
Everything.
And it's getting worse.
Yes. I talked to Mr. Ranger Strohmeyer about the possibility of changing speed limits and stuff like that, blend, and, kind of keep it, sort of big processes. I'd like to see us go a mile and a half on a trail, but that's where the young kids are, they're not gonna go any farther than that, they're in there, but after that, they can have it.
When do you expect your bids back on Clear Creek for all that?
So we were supposed to have a meeting, was it Thursday, Danny? Wednesday, and the guy canceled on us, so he said he'd call today, and he said it won't take him long for the design together. So as we get the design together, I'll get the bids from OK Gravel, I'm not, I'm not gonna call it a bid, I'm gonna get the budgets from OK Gravel, and then we'll, well, grant.
Get the grant.
Grant doesn't need to be in till G... Grant doesn't need to be until January thirty first. And then we supposedly will receive, it's so funny, I always say this, we're supposed to know by the end of March if we got the grants or not, and here we are, yeah, almost in June, and we don't know. I'm gonna say in June of next year, we'll know. But, um, if I go to the board meetings, I usually have a good sense whether we're gonna get them or not. And if we get them, then, uh, we'll start getting things ready. It'd be nice next summer to have that thing built out.
And those grants are from IDPR?
Yes. How we use it.
That's taking advantage of the recreational vehicle program, right?
That's the RV program, which has a lot of money.
Unused.
Unused, that's, and, and, uh, how do we call it? An RV camping.
Well, so, as I say, you know, I'd just like to ask a little bit more too, because I, you know, I've driven through Wellington and, and those sites, and I can't really remember, are those parking areas, are they gravelled? They go back in by the picnic tables and whatnot?
Yes, that's.
So, like, the vision that we would have would be, you know, and I agree a hundred percent with you, is we need these hardened campsites.
Yes.
Where, you know, it has designated a place to park so that people aren't parking out in the trees or wherever they like the shade.
Yes.
Um, but is that, is that kinda the vision that you're looking at for Clear Creek, as well as where you would have a gravel pad and a place to put a tent next to it and fire pit?
Absolutely. Uh, we're gonna take it a step farther this time, though. We'll have a smooth pad for, um, a handicapped. It wasn't on our last grant we did down there, but we've got all that ground.
That's concrete, yeah. You have to use concrete.
We'll just make one or two pads of their handicapped accessible there. Of the, uh, rail around the baller toilet harness. I think we're gonna end up with, uh, you know, a older, huge project.
Well, I see the email from Jeff that he saw you guys held back on that last week.
We did. We said we should take a look at that road before we take it on this spring.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Older road.
Oh, boy.
Just make sure there weren't any big washouts or problems with any of the culprits they put in.
Well, um, I will tell you, as you know, um, zip line people did do some repair work on it. But it, it's pretty steep in that one, out there.
That was actually the state. They, they did that last, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
They paid the contract when that got done. It was the summer before last.
I, I would really like to meet whoever's gonna be involved in that meeting. I'd like to meet in here. I'll have a list of stuff. I, I personally, I feel like they're gonna ask. All their zip line contracts.
All the existing recreational leasing, yeah, better.
I didn't realize they'd actually started doing that after. That would really, that's a whole different lease. It's not, it's still not a commercial lease now, but, yeah, it's just not. In a really good position.
Well, and I guess that's kinda the point of, you know, we've been talking about that for a while. By the way, we could talk tomorrow during the day if you have some time. I'll be in here. Um, prior to that meeting on Wednesday, but the, I think the point is, is that we're looking at like a pretty significant expansion of what we're, what we're currently doing, you know, from some summer stuff and a lot of winter stuff to a pretty much a year round program expansion. And so that was where I was interested in. What is our next step? What do you see? Like, I mean, funding is obviously gonna be a big issue. You know, staffing for funding, you know, in my mind, I see a lot of opportunities to improve the services that we're able to offer if we have additional funds available to us.
Yeah, the, the, I, I think the strategy will be first get permission. At that point, we can do, once we've got permission, then we can do the planning. The sad part is, one of the most important spots we need is at the bottom, no business site. We need a parking lot there. Um, I have, owners just aren't willing to discuss anything right now. That's probably the most important thing that we have for year round recreation.
We have that old groundwater site that's up, no business, just the ways, but it's not very big.
Not very big at all.
It's, uh, what is it? Fifty feet wide and a hundred and ten feet long. It's pretty tiny, but, uh, yeah, I, I appreciate that.
We could exchange it.
Yeah, we could, we could exchange it.
For something else, so.
Oh, my.
So I wanna, I wanna, uh, say a couple of things too. I think you've been amazing at the winter grooming program and your connections to people in the industry. You've done a great job, Larry. I think that there are some opportunities in the summer programs that I would really like to see us look at and expand into. The National Park Service, you know, with their, um, coordinated effort with bicycling programs. I think that that needs to be something that the county is really looking at.
It was all trail users. That meeting that we attended last week gets all the trail users in the area.
Yeah, and that is an opportunity, that, that collaboration that is now together and getting that National Park Service grant was huge. And so taking that opportunity now and expanding upon that is gonna be really important, in my opinion. Um, nobody's working in my, I don't think this is true, nobody's really working with the motorcycle community and UTV communities for summer recreation, making sure that we do have appropriate trail systems that are maintained. Uh, I know that Citra does a lot of work on the trails in collab, in collaboration with the Forest Service. But are there opportunities to expand little parking areas for those guys, you know, or, um, you know, an overnight tent campsite, or, you know, how do you expand that? Because that is something, I know that Andrew Minzer done a lot of work on the new adventure biking kind of stuff. Adventure biking actually came out of Cascade. It's one of the the largest natural adventure bike hubs, um, in, in the Northwest because of all of the areas that it goes to and the circulation routes. So that's an opportunity, and, and actually, we did some, um, advertising around that a couple of years ago, a year ago, a couple of years ago. I think those guys are crazy personally, but there's a lot, there's a huge opportunity for that adventure biking in this area. Um, you know, obviously, building out the bike lanes, the single track sidewalks, we, we need to figure out how to work on that, because that is, that's really, will connect our communities also for summertime. Um, you know, I, I don't know if we've ever had anything to do with the kayak racing down the canyon. That's still in Valley County, isn't it? Where they set up all of the bleachers and, you know, I mean, there's opportunities to expand those kayak racing opportunities. Whitewater in the summertime is huge here. Um, I, the biggest thing for me is, is we plan into the future. Last year, everybody, I mean, honestly, I didn't even try and go to a trailhead on most of the weekends because it was just, it's just like walking into the trailhead at Boise or into the mall in Boise. We've got to figure out how to, how, not, not necessarily, you know, people are very concerned with growth. And we are going to grow. We cannot stop people from coming to visit us. That we have been found, they're gonna come visit us. How do we try and take that instead of having our small little park pockets that we have been so used to using as locals, they're being loved to death now, and, and push some of that out? So, um, I know that there are opportunities out there. State of Oregon's done a great job, and I don't know how we could replicate this or if we can, but, you know, the UTV parks where there's park camping in the middle of it, you got fifty eight or fifty miles of trail or something around it. It protects the environment, keeps, keeps those, you know, the opportunities for kids to go out and learn. Same thing with the, the, um, motorcycle. You know, my kids learned on those motorcycle tracks in Oregon where you went out, you knew exactly where you were going, and they were something that people didn't get lost in. I think you've done a fabulous job. I, I can just only imagine the stress that you feel right now with thinking that, oh my God, how are we gonna do any more than we're currently doing? And your legislative work has been so important. You and I have talked about someday when you wanna retire, you know, what, what are the things that you love doing and what you wanna to work on? Yeah, I wanna retire too, so don't look at me that way. Someday, I, I wanna do the things I wanna do. Um, you know, but how can we best support you in making sure, how can we best support the county in making sure that our recreation program is vibrant moving forward?
Well, a lot of the things that are in place right now, they just, they take another form. Um, RV, single track, all that that's on the Forest Service, that's taken place at, at the Payette Forest Coalition and the Boise Forest Coalition. And the problems we have right now is we do not have a plan. When they got sued, threw the travel plan out. So, nothing's happening here. I always, if you go to the Payette Forest Coalition, and I have in the Boise earlier, is I'll always bring up the Malheur Forest in Oregon. You would think Oregon would be the strictest, right? Uh, no. They've got some of the best trail systems with signage. You won't get lost in there. Our signage here is just for it. And everybody says it, but nobody will do anything about it.
It's another one of the rock grants that got written with some additional signage this year.
That's good.
I think a lot of it too depends on the forest. There are some forests in Idaho that are really pushing this recreation, motorized and non-motorized trail. For example, Bay Horse. I don't know if you guys have ever been over in that part of the country, but
It's incredible.
You can go for hundreds of miles. And every time you hit an intersection, there's a kiosk that says so and so's this way and so and so's that way, and and they've really developed it, and like Larry said, in, in our situation with the Payette and the Boise Bowl, they're anti. They've been anti for a long time, but I can see a lot of this pendulum is starting to swing back.
Better now.
When our coalition gets after the forces of you guys aren't doing enough for recreation, and we're not gonna support you on anything else, that's a pretty serious step by a coalition to take. And all that letter's going to the forest supervisor right now. And, I mean, we had some really tough conversations the last week, the week before I left at the coalition on you got to provide recreational amenities. The guys in Idaho City and that Clear Creek area over there are screaming for more trails because what's happening is they're using our county roads. And they're wearing them out faster than anything, especially on the corners. And, and when I came through the other day at Smith's Ferry, there was eight ATVs, UTVs coming down off High Valley and go across and going around Valley, and that's the kinda stuff that we need to encourage. And, and I, we gotta get that mindset in the forest service level changed.
And those camp.
Got to connect these trails. Instead of obliterating these roads, you've gotta figure out, wait, can we make this a loop system?
And those hardened campgrounds, I mean, that's fire mitigation. We've got people just out, you know, putting a campground or a fire pit anywhere, leaving it after they leave, and, and it's, you know, we've gotta do some things for fire mitigation.
But you go out there on the south fork where everybody used to camp, offsite camping on the Isole and Johnson Creek, all that area, and they'd come in and put boulders in and kick people out. They've done the opposite, and it's like, this has gotta stop.
Well, so, some of this, one of the things we've asked, because everything that the Forest Service is doing now, I wouldn't say everything, but ninety percent of it is unkill mitigation.
Right.
And we've asked them to put into place, along with that, repair your signs. Make your trail markers. You go to Malheur and they have year round trail markers. They just raise them up if the snow gets higher and it comes back down. We've gotta replace all our trail markers, summer and winter, and it costs hundreds and hundreds of hours in maintenance to do this. It costs every year, and we can't get anything done. I think we're heading in the right direction. There's no guarantee of that, but the parking lot issue and the camping issue, we've been trying to get, uh, good example of recreation, that potential recreation needles area for a lot of pilots. That is extremely hot.
There's two campsites.
Yeah, rock climbing, and also I've heard that they're using the Jeeps now to do the rock stuff out there.
I haven't seen that on that one.
Not so much the needles, yeah.
Needles has just hardly anything there, and they're down about, I don't know, maybe a quarter, because you gotta be close because you can't carry all that gear out there. There's a spot that we could have a hardened camping program. We brought it up time after time after time after time, and it goes anywhere.
Well, and I was gonna say, I agree with everything you're saying and I agree with, El, you're, you know, I'm, I'm, obviously, I'm on the Payette Forest side of Payette Forest Coalition and land allocation stuff, but, you know, I guess what I'm trying to get at is ultimately, we can't change what the feds are gonna do. We have a lot, we can influence it. We can give them recommendations, but thinking about our recreation program is more, to me, the areas that are inside the valley floor. We're talking about the access points that we need to get out to those areas. Some of them are gonna be on, on forest service ground, and, and again, that's gonna be something we can maybe work with them on, but I'm talking more about the things that we have here in the valley that we need to be addressing.
And that's, and that's why I think right now our priorities are IDL and Pride of Land.
Absolutely, IDL, you bet.
And the rest of that is gonna take, and that's the one you just gotta be very patient, like a, a very awesome person once told me is, you gotta just keep going and keep going and keep going, because there's a lot of people that want us to give up. And once you give up, you'll never get it.
And the user fees that we can associate with that. User fees are a big thing.
Yes, I, I agree. I, it's time. Because the, the funding, we can get grants, but we're always, always gotta keep in our, in our minds eye. Yeah, oh, great, we're gonna go get this fifty thousand dollar grant. Well, okay, we're the fifteen, twenty thousand dollars for a match. We're that fifty thousand. We can build, we get seven thousand dollars a year out of Wellington campground. It doesn't cost us thirty five hundred dollars a year at this time for maintenance down there. We're getting more out of the bargain than we're putting into it right now. And, um, once we get Clear Creek going and get two more campgrounds, and then all of a sudden, um, our, 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 our base is paid for, and we just start expanding and never touch tax dollars. Those should be going to roads and everything. All the great things we think about.
Well, and really, if you think about the road conversation, so everything you're working on in all of these, you know, dispersed campgrounds, we have to plow the roads to get there and a lot of times.
Yes.
So we've got to be able to plan for that also. You know, a lot of people are confused on why we do the, the, um, Forest Service one over there. I can't remember the name. I'm right, the, the further roads. Um, and it's because of our huge recreational programs up here. The back country screaming that they don't get enough of our, our tax dollars going to the back, um, back roads. Well, the valley floor is in such poor shape right now, we can't spend more on the back roads. But that's where your dispersed campgrounds are going. So, we've got to work collaboratively between our road department and your department to make sure that we can get to all these areas.
And Jeff and I were talking the other day about the possibilities. Some of Jeff's issues is how do you get the equipment there, get it done and get it backed?
Absolutely.
And, so right now, um, the road department and recreation at Wellington, we share a VACO. We bought fifty percent of it. Grant, we share the maintenance on it. Well, he needs, the VACOs, we need, he needs another front end loader. So, if we share a front end loader, that goes down Wellington all the time. This guy, instead of hauling a piece of equipment all the way down the valley, he drives down, gets in that front end loader and goes to take care of the Smith's Berry site. Saves him a ton of money, a ton of labor, and he gives us a better piece of equipment to clean that parking lot with. Possibly, another little dream, keeping that campground open for winter camping. That is starting to be a big thing now.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I, you know, there's another option too that, and you've kinda done it in Wellington where you have a camp host. And the camp host is the one that keeps it clean. He's the one that goes around and makes sure everybody pays and, you know.
Makes the phone call over the property.
And people are taking care of it. They're not destroying it. And I think that would work at Clear Creek as well. And to me, that's kind of one of the ways you can get out of that cost of having to go in in the spring, clean everything up, and pick up all the garbage. That, that's the camp host's responsibility and and for being able to live there for free. And it's usually not free because he's got a power bill or something that, that we're paying too as well.
Probably won't have power up there, but it's fine.
Not at Clear Creek, not yet, but it's coming.
That guy that bought the property up there says he's gonna run power out there, so we'll just wait.
Yeah. But I think that's one option is, you know, we don't necessarily need to hire a bunch more people to do that. If we set these campgrounds up right, we can do camp hosts. And that's really popular. I know a lot of people, that's all they do all summer is go be a camp host somewhere. They move around the country.
Back and forth with Arizona.
Yeah. That's crazy, but.
Do you know the Forest Service in this area has been having a harder and harder time finding folks to do the camp host program over the last five or six years?
I know, they're having problems with horse thieves right now.
Yeah, it's all, all up north too, and over in Lost Lake and.
The Forest Service demands things at their camp house. I, I don't think we ever would. They've gotta go out and, they gotta haul all the trash away, take it to wherever and stuff like that. I don't think we need to do that.
Well, they don't have garbage pickup at most of the Forest Service camps. They're talking about like, you know.
Well, we're horse thief, that, those, that's what those guys do, take them all and drive.
Right, so thinking about like the folks that are on the main campgrounds on the forest, they clean the bathrooms, just what we're talking about, you know, make sure that the campgrounds look pretty clean, they're not piling up with garbage and, um, you know, it's a haul it in, haul it out kinda scenario, but they still go out and do all the work themselves. You're asking volunteers to do it.
So what about the Worm Lake area? What, is there any plans to do any kinda, you know, campgrounds up there, or?
There is actually. Right, right now, there's so many moving parts to all this stuff. Right now, Midas Gold, of course, we're talking about moving our, our Grim Trail Johnson Creek over and going up the power lines. And if that's the case, right at the bottom of there, there's a, um, I don't know, what they use it to do is dump asphalt. There's a big, big spot there that'd be awesome for parking lot and an RV campground if we get a decision made on it. But at the same time, as Commissioner Hasberg and I have talked about, um, when, um, I suppose. when, I suppose the last ranger on the Crystal District, Anthony-
Anthony Botella.
Was there, he made a manager's rule to stop any, any RVs or anything going down that road. You can take a bicycle, you can hike, you can take a camper and a truck. You can't take an ATV and a UTV down to the South Fork. And-
Is that on Johnson Road? Is that on Johnson?
That's on South Fork. And it's really sad because that's the big circle, once the mining is all taken care of. That's the big circle, it's going all the way around backup Johnson Creek and drop down to there. And I was hoping that with Anthony gone, we'd have an opportunity. But I brought it up and boy, I'll tell you, it didn't sound good.
No, you know, since we didn't take that Firda Easem on the South Fork, the Forest Service has come back and said, no ATVs, no UTVs on that road. You can go from Buckhorn back, but you can't go further on. I'm going, you know how many people that's going to make mad when you guys start writing tickets for being on that road? And it's like, let that one roll and the public's going to scream hard enough that maybe they'll change.
Talking to an attorney that's the president of Idaho ATV, UTV Association, I would wonder if they're going to really write a ticket because that was made by a rule. They didn't even have any public input or anything on that.
Right.
And, you know, if we get time, maybe down the road, we should challenge it. I know that our attorneys are extremely busy right now. And I might talk to Dave and see if that ATV, UTV Association will challenge it. Because it really needs to be open. There is no reason why if a truck pulling a trailer can go down there, if a bicycle can go down there, hikers can go down there, why not an ATV and a UTV? Thing doesn't add up.
Sounds arbitrary. Town's arbitrary, definitely.
Well, after being eight years in the Big Creek Yol line collaboration.
And then I'll go back to my other conversation with you that we've been having for so long.
Still working on it.
Okay, that's, and that is like, it's almost two different functions, you know, because you need to be in the field working. We need somebody that can write those policies and procedures and oversee it and train all your guys and making sure that we're, as a county, don't have the liability. You know, that's why, that's my largest part of this conversation is as we move forward, that this is a huge part of our economy in this area. We have to make sure that we are structured correctly so that if something happens, the county's protected as we move forward.
Well, I think we're to the point that if all of a sudden, y'all decided to buy an island.
Can you do that and I'll be your chef?
Yes. You can take that list and pretty well manage, somebody could manage, because it's a list of everything that needs to take place. There's still a few little things. For me, you talk about liability, the biggest thing is, like Danny has been talking about a lot, as soon as we open things up, always be looking up at trees, make sure there's no loose branches, make sure the creeks are clear, the roads are clear. Those are the things that I've seen, the parks up here that get them in more trouble than anything else. Yeah, we've got great lists, we just.
I was feel for you guys, you've got to just be pulling your hair out some days. Oh, my gosh, how do we cover, how many, how many miles is it from one end to the other? Like fifty miles?
This is, right now is the time that it's kind of, it backs off a little bit. We get about a month, month and a half. As soon as Boulder opens, as soon as all the people come back out that like the volunteer, then it's go for it, get everything cleared, get everything done, yeah. And I did ask, I put on, even though we're not talking about the A budget, I did put on Doug's list. After we have this discussion next, or this Wednesday, it may be quicker than not. I'm already looking forward to it.
Dan, do you want to add anything? Anything you want to say?
I'll stick to that one.
And going full time.
One of the biggest thing in recreations is if that one you're dealing with recreation is, got to listen, talk to them. Got to have the ability not to do everything because if you do everything, then you don't ever get buy-in on it. You get volunteers to start doing something, they take ownership of it. And that's when you grow and get better. Danny's pretty good at that. He can talk to them, he can listen to them. And that was, that was the thing I was looking for more than anything. That's what'll make us grow efficiently. We don't want to force growth.
The other side to the conversation with IDL is if we were to go out for a levy someday, where would we want open space created? I mean, it's, it's going to be important that we identify all over the county, those areas that are either historical in nature or, you know, people are very tied to them emotionally. That, you know, they don't want to see housing in this area. I mean, the Boise foothills was a perfect example. People had such a love of the Boise foothills, they would do anything to protect that. Because people go walk in it, you know, they bike in it. That was their playground. Well, we know some of those areas in the north because obviously the Endowment lands have really brought that to the forefront. But in the southern end of the valley, where is that? You know, Elt, if you were, where's your favorite memory?
You know, we're doing that. I think it's just taken a while to get there. But Wellington was the biggest one because that's accessed both the High Valley and Round Valley and even Garden Valley. And then Clear Creek is going to access Worm Lake and all the way clear into the backcountry from the Clear Creek side of it. We've been after the Forest Service on Coalition to build more campgrounds on the west side of Cascade Lake. I mean, like, six, eight, ten more campgrounds. And they realized that, that the impact, that they have to start doing some of this stuff. But like you were talking about the ATV and UTV groups, we had an ATV group from Emmett, very strong group on our Coalition. And after about three years of the Forest Service saying, no, we're not going to do any more trails or we're going to obliterate, they quit. And that's the issue now is that people on the Coalition are saying, you know what? I don't even know why we're here. You guys don't listen to us. And I can see a shift that's coming. And guys like Jake Strowmar, who is just the opposite of what's been in that position in the past, are like, yeah, we have to provide this. If we don't, they're going to make it their own or we're not going to like where they're going to put it. So that mindset is starting, I think, changed quite a bit in the Forest Service. But, you know, the Sage Hen project that we did, that we approved here a couple of years ago, they were supposed to build a lot more campgrounds, a lot more bike trails, a lot more, and they did none of that. And we said, where is that? That was part of our recommendations. Well, we're going to get to that later because we've got to go do something else and we don't have the staff. Like, no, you have to make this a priority.
And that's what I'm thinking, you know, we're bike trails on the southern end of the valley, you know, so that recreationists down here have an opportunity to go fifteen minutes and get out of a trailhead and go for a bike trail. Or even walking trails, you know, where do people hunt morels here? Where do they hunt huckleberries? When you start getting to that emotional area with, I guess I'm thinking about the locals because people that have lived here all their lives are seeing their way of life disappear. Let's protect some of that. Let's protect some of that. And we can do that with an open space levy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, I think exactly what you're, kind of what you're saying right now is that, you know, there's places that are near and dear to the locals that are disappearing. And I mean, I just throw an example out, I get a call about every three weeks from one person who has lost his ability to go walk up from Smiley Lane up the river corridor. There's a fence that got put in on a piece of private property that may or may not be in the right spot. But there's now a spot for one car to be parked in that area where there used to be, you know, a lot that would access a big chunk of the river right there.
And the one thing that I'm hearing a lot about are all the hot springs. Now with Bergdorf closing and being, becoming private and Gold Fork's not open, I don't know if they're going to open again. You know, what, what do we have? That's a huge asset that we have in this region is the hot spring. And we're really not building in that capacity at all.
On there on the-
We're not developing any of those.
Well, culturally, stuff that we're losing, other than agriculture, we're losing all of our, a lot of European, like, I don't know, Teno Basin. We actually, we pushed really hard to get the forest to either give it to us or give it to a veterans hunting group. Forest Service says no.
Let's, let's keep all of those things, you know, historical knowledge is important.
You guys, it's a book and Commissioner Hasberg bought it. It's huge. I would love to see us buy Cinnabar. Turn that into a local museum to show what mining really was and what it is now. So much potential out there. Clear Creek's involved. Huge, it's huge controversy, but the whole reason why that couldn't be helped.
We just don't want to take on any environmental hazards that we would be held accountable for in the future.
And then you're talking about a very remote location to do maintenance on.
But isn't that what we want to do is get people to the east, get people spread out? That's our issue right now is we have a few trailheads and they are packed with people. People are willing to drive places as long as they have facilities, as long as Yellow Pine is still in existence, which I'm not so sure that's going to happen. I, in the past, I've always wanted to groom in the Yellow Pine. It used to be a destination. They have forty, fifty sleds in there, stayed at the hotel and going to the restaurants. And now there's nothing. That's not right.
So I'm going to circle back around. It seems like all these things we're talking about require cash. A lot of, a lot of things do.
Time.
They require cash. Time, but what we're looking at right now is, you know, we're getting crunched right now. Think about the amount of grooming that you do right now and how many more days you could groom each week if you had more money. Right?
That's why we pass that one.
So think about all of those different kinds of things. And it goes to me way beyond just the grooming component. There's a lot of different things we could be doing if we had more resources to do them. So I would just look at that, you know, and think, how do we get to that point? We're getting crunched right now. You know, we talked about it a little bit, we could have been looking at some of these things five, 10 years ago and set ourselves up for the growth and the expansion of the need for recreation that we're seeing right now. The attraction that our local areas are bringing, you know, more and more people up here every summer. But we're not. And so now, that's where I think we are is right now is what do we see happening in the next three years? And how can we get there to meet the need? What are we seeing 10 years?
Four weeks, we should have this conversation again. And then we'll have. But the, at that point.
Why don't you put that on an agenda when you have-
The 20-year plan, 10 years is tomorrow.
Well, you need a one-year plan, a five-year plan and a 20-year plan. Why don't you put that on an agenda as soon as you have that information available to you? Thanks, Larry, for all you do. Thank you, Danny, for all you do. Fishing bridge looks excellent.
Dice.
Yes. You know, all those little touches where people can see we're actually making progress are so important.
First time the snow got off and Danny and I drove when we went down to Donley, we're sitting there looking and holy moly, everything stayed. Awesome.
Better. It was only one winner, Larry. I would challenge your skills. Oh, Danny did. Yeah, he was worried about it.
Thank you for the cards.
Bet. Thanks, Danny, for all your help, both of you. Okay, our next agenda item is a social committee update. Chief Gabby Knapp, she's not here yet.
Mr. Chairman, she's setting up the precinct locations. I don't know if she's going to be able to make it, if that potentially could be postponed, that would be-
Okay. And we're still doing the highway cleanup here. That's coming up here pretty quick, isn't it?
It's scheduled for the 25th, yes.
25th, so hopefully everybody can get involved with that. We lost the group that cleans in front of my place. The Grangers, the Grangers all died. So I've been cleaning it up. My wife and I pick it up, try and keep up with it.
It did outside of, between Donley and McCall over the weekend? There were bags after bags. It looked so good.
There's another one on the 22nd, I think, is the next, they're doing another chunk orthodontally again. I don't know which section it is for sure.
Really good.
Location of the upball? Office of that?
I don't think that's been finalized just yet. Are they going to use the city baseball fields?
That's what I wondered.
I think in Cascade, that they would use those.
If it's Cascade on property, then that'd be. Oh, I'll track her down then. That's fun, though.
Yeah, yeah, it does. It's good for morale building. So we have, our next agenda item is not until a quarter to 12.
Need water.
Guess we can take a break for 15 minutes and back here at quarter to 12. You thinking it'd take 15 minutes to do that American Rescue Plan Act? We do that now? That's for the latest money coming out, right?
That's the ARPA.
ARPA. Well, let's take a break until a quarter to 12.
And I was going to tell you too, Sherri, that when I was talking to Jerry Robison, that there is a wash bay for all that county equipment up at Lakeport. They built a special room on the northeast corner of the building that has pressure washing all that. And I thought, you ever heard anything about it? I thought this week I'd drive up there and take a look at that and see if that's-
See if that heat and floors and-
We need the undercarriage spray too. That was the-
I think it was for undercarriage.
I didn't think they had that up there.
It got lost.
Lot of conversation about why, you know, that's not being utilized more up there, but.
Well, and then you talked a great deal about, you know, guys need to sandblast the beds and repaint them every year. They're not, they used to do that. They're not doing that anymore and it's like.
Well, it sounds like that would be a good addition. We're, I've given Jeff and Jeremy some software to look at that is being used in the area. Replacement schedules as well as inventory. I bought us a microwave back here. Get it out of the box.
To eat your salad with.
I don't eat salad very much, but yeah, keep my coffee hot. Pat, I don't know if I want to put this on my calendar. Our coaching stuff, I put it all on our calendar and then we changed them all. Maybe I'll just save this document. Easy to-
Well, the workshop. I updated it, but I only moved one cell and forgot about the holiday. Good. In my form.
Please.
Everything's in the right place at work, so. I'm here all the holidays. Did keep the one on.
You got your haircut. Really? You look different than last time I saw you.
I have so much curl on it that I have to-
I have that problem too. I mean, it just gets out of hand and. All three of them.
This is not always the same. This is not always the same.
Went to the new barber down by the vet, had my haircut before we left on this trip. Driving, two days down, a day and a half there and two days back.
We're sure Gabby's on her way.
An eight-lane interstate that came to a complete stop.
That happened in Boise.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that happens in Boise. Something just happens in.
We were at those meetings Wednesday, so I went down Tuesday night and, uh, met my sister-in-law for dinner. And I was at Costco going to Eagle Road and she said, get her before six because we can have a drink for less. So I said, it's five fifteen. Okay, no worries. The interstate had been closed all day long for a huge, um, fire that they had on a big truck. Yeah, yeah, and, uh. That one knew that it was reopened, so they were on all the back roads. Took me an hour and fifteen minutes to get from Costco to Eagle. I could not believe it. It's like, oh.
You guys here for the social committee?
I think they're here for this.
Oh.
How are you doing Scott? Good to see you back.
I'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah, oh, tomorrow. Good.
And he's working okay?
That's awesome. It is yellow. More pain.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, if you ever want to watch a weird surgery, get on YouTube. Watch them how they replace a knee.
I thought about it, nope. I had it here. Thought about it and I started beginning and I said, maybe I better not. I could handle the, the glory part, but I just didn't want to see it.
It's pretty vicious.
Pretty vicious.
But a hip surgery is even worse because a hip surgery, they bring your left foot and put it up here by your right ear. They pop your joint out.
Thanks for letting us know that.
Hip surgery is faster recovery than knee.
Now your body remembers. That's why it's so difficult to remember if your.
I've never been stretched this way before.
Exactly. Doug, uh, state tax information, how many, how many do you think are gonna be, um, impacted? That have under two hundred thousand dollars in Valley County. I mean, how many houses do we have now that?
Do we have that maximum?
Um.
That's what we encountered right here.
Tax, you can be glad to cut. I don't know yet.
Some of, I mean, that's gonna actually do exactly the opposite of what they wanted. They're actually hurting the, the, um, overpriced houses. I think that was a tragedy. I think that one will have to be adjusted this next year.
We, uh, going to Portland? Decided not happy yet.
I'm going. We're gonna have a large conversation about the association this year taking on housing as one of the legislative. Conversations.
Come on up Gabby.
Taking back.
You're up.
Sorry I'm late. I double booked myself.
Go ahead.
Um, so the social committee, last time we met, decided that we should do regular updates to the commissioners on what we're doing. So that everyone's aware, um, we, before any event, we do talk to Commissioner Mopin just to run the event by her and, and Pat and make sure that they're on board. But we wanted to make sure everyone was included, so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the past events we've done and what we have upcoming. Um, so we've been making, or doing events for about a year now. Last year we did the ice cream social where we tied it to a school drive, so we donated school supplies to the schools. Uh, then we did a canned food drive. Um, in October, we did a pumpkin carving contest. December, we did a Christmas decorating contest. Valentine's Day, um, you could purchase Valentines and, um, have them delivered to a coworker or a kid at a school. Um, at Cascade School or, um, you could take some home to someone. So that was a huge event, actually. Um, we thought that it was kind of cheesy and maybe not everyone would really like it, but people really liked it and we sold quite a bit and made a lot of money off of that one. Um, and then around Easter, we did an Easter egg hunt, which again, wasn't a huge draw, but those who did got really into it and had a really good time with that, so. Those were what we've done over the last year. Um, what we have upcoming. We have the highway cleanup, which we did last year as well. Um, so we have to do that every six months. So we're set for May twenty-fifth. I think we have about ten or eleven volunteers as of now, so a few more would be great, but we have enough to get the job done. We'll have hot dogs and chips and soda before we go and then we'll do the mile just out by the state shed. Um, so that's set. And then, um, our big event for the summer that we have just started planning. Um, as long as we get everyone's participation, is going to be a police versus firefighter slash EMT softball game. We thought that this would be a really good community outreach, a way to get people from McCall, Donley, Cascade, all out. They can wear red or they can wear blue and they can, um, support one side or the other. Uh, and just have really good community upbuilding after such a long, hard year. Uh, we had the idea last year in mind, but knew it wasn't gonna be possible with COVID. Um, but this year we're really excited. The sheriff's office has already said yes. Um, we'll call and tech McCall PD and see if they want to team up. We figure between the jail dispatch and sheriff's office, they have enough. They easily could get a whole team plus the police department. Cascade Fire has said yes. We're still waiting to hear from Donley and McCall, so. Um, but I have an email out to Brian Okey just to make sure liabilities, the legal side, he's gonna look into all that and just make sure if we need any kind of insurance or stuff like that. And then we'll start planning, um, but we're gonna do it for charity, so that both teams get to pick a charity to represent. And then eighty percent of the proceeds will go to the winning team, twenty percent to the losing team, so that everyone still can win. And then the charities can also have like a booth at the event where they can hand out flyers and try to get more involvement for their event, or for their charity as well. So we're very excited about that. Um, we figured that'll be a big involvement. We'll try to get employees or, yeah, county employees from all over the. To sell hot dogs or take tickets and different things to get the, um, employees involved in helping us as well, so. We're excited about that. Um, ongoing, we have an honor bar.
Gabby, hold on one second. Where is that one? Brian needs to know where you're planning on holding that.
Uh, we haven't checked because we wanted to make sure we had, um, all the teams involved first, but we were hoping to just do it here in Cascade down. Um, by there's little two old diamonds across the bridge there that the city owns, I assume. We talked about Donley, but we weren't sure. We thought the school would probably be the only place in Donley that would have a diamond and we weren't sure with COVID and stuff if they would. And, you know, being summer, what they would think, so. We hadn't caught that far yet. For now, that, that's our number one choice.
Gabby Woodde, you thinking of?
We haven't picked a date either because we wanted to make sure the fire department was in first. Um, but we were gonna work with the sheriff office because being that summer, they have busier weeks, maybe Au- late August, early September. It's kind of what we're thinking. Any other questions? Sorry, didn't pause for questions.
Worries.
So ongoing, sorry.
I think you're doing great. I mean, it's really good for morale for everybody and keeps us all on the same page.
Yeah, not every event that we've planned has hit, has, you know, interested everybody, but we try to change it up and do something different each time and have had kind of a different crowd, so. I don't think any of our events have been a failure. I think we've, everyone's really enjoyed all of them, so. We do do the honor bar downstairs, which has also been a big success. That's where we get a lot of our funds too, um, so. And buys stuff from like Costco and then sells it for a little upcharge and then, um, the money, she divides it and she's not here today, otherwise I would have brought her to explain it. All she divides it into. Some for like charity events and then some for just rebuying into the snack bar and then some into planning of future events, so. We always use a little bit of that money each time we do an event, because not all of our events bring in money, so. And then we want to do a bulletin board. Um, haven't asked for permission yet because the committee has been still kind of kicking it around. But we want to put up a bulletin board kind of like down in the lobby where the deputies are to show the community what we're doing. You know, I figured we could put up the softball pictures afterwards and say, hey, look at this, or if we have an upcoming, you know, canned food drive, we could put up saying that it's coming and the community could participate too or things like that, so. As long as we have permission, I finally got a bulletin board. Uh, Kelly had one for us and so we got that. So if that, if we get approval for that, we'll put that up and just start decorating it and putting stuff out there, so everyone else knows and we can get the good PR. Because that's part of this too, is for the community to know that we're doing stuff.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Yeah, awesome. Are you guys gonna, you're gonna do a clerks barbecue this summer?
Mm-hmm. We haven't started planning it yet, but we are, yep. And we love feedback. If anyone has any ideas of what they want to see us doing or want to come to one of our meetings, we usually meet about once a month. Be happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Said we'd need a yard sale. I got a bunch of crap to get rid of.
Hey, this time we're going to go into a service awards presentation. And, uh. First one up is Max. Come on up. Thank God we don't have to wear a mask.
Yeah. Nice.
Max, on behalf of ten years of your life, thank you for contributing to the public service of Valley County, all the energy and effort and.
Been thanking the guys that have to work with me.
Congratulations.
I can't see what's on. There you go. Perfect. Thank you.
We'll do that to you Jeff next time.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, and then Scott, come on up. You know, we have a, a, an awards program for longtime employees. This one is dedicated to Scott DeOu for twenty-five years.
Oh wow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get to go do a little shopping.
Congratulations Scott. Jeff's on one. Jeff's on one today.
Normally you guys have to give a ten-minute speech. Max is first. Come on up to the mic.
Thank you for all you guys do.
Oh, you're welcome. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Another twenty-five years.
Thanks you guys. Have a, have a safe day. Hey, we've got ten minutes until our next agenda item. You want to start now or do you want to wait?
I'm good to go. Oh, who's Max though? Road Department?
Road Department, yep.
So when Jeff had the lead.
Lead.
One of the north, one of the south. Who was one of the?
Okay, got it.
It was the north lead.
All right.
He was out of Lakeport.
Just point that way.
Yeah, I know. Did you have another question here?
Oh.
Oh, you're just, you already do.
Hey, thanks Pat. Good job.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next item is an action item. This is a discussion and a decision on application for the American Rescue Plan Act registration. And I take it we have to register to be eligible, but this is the process of just getting registered.
Brian and, and Doug, Doug has sat through a presentation on that. We sat through a presentation on it and there are some requirements. I mean, whoever registers has to give a copy of their driver's license, has to give personal information and, uh, so.
So you want to come on up?
Open to a conversation. Who's leading? Did I put this on there?
Who do we, who's gonna do that?
That's the question.
Good morning, uh, members of the board, Brian Okey, the prosecutor's office. Um, so Doug and I did have a chance to review their, their presentation to announce their one hundred and thirty-seven page interim rule. So I've, I have thought, obviously gone through every, every line of the rule, but I'm working on it. So I may not be able to answer all of your questions here today, but, um, if you have any, I can, I can, I certainly can. One thing I would also mention that is separate apart from this particular rule. Is there's some question as to what role the legislature is gonna play in this distribution of funds. There's, uh, the Senate adjourned, the House, uh, went into recess and that created some legal questions that I think. Are still being discussed and, and not entirely resolved, so there's gonna be, uh, that, that I'm paying close attention to as well. I know the Attorney General's Office had, uh, done a, an opinion on kind of what that, what that means for, for legislative oversight of the distribution of funds. So I'll track that and keep you posted as, as that develops and evolves.
That's the state funds. That's the billion-dollar state funds. So ARPA is the direct county funds.
Well, the, uh, the, the reason I bring that to your attention is because counties are a subdivision of the state. And I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't necessarily say that the state is not going to want to have some level of control over whether counties. Bring those dollars into the county or not. That, no, that I don't know for sure, uh, until we know, but.
So the Idaho Association of Counties stated specifically that this is a direct link for counties. The state does not have oversight on this. The state has oversight on the billion and, and if we, if they mess with our funding mechanisms because we got these ARPA funds.
Yeah.
But my understanding is, and from just talking to the other commissioners in the room, is they're all, they're all signing up. There is no oversight from the state at all on this section of funding.
Well, I'll, I'll certainly defer to the Association of Counties. They're, they're plugged in more than I have, since this is just a, an emerging issue and with so many. Uh, so, so many pages of, of rules to review. Uh, it's just one of those things that I kind of circled, uh, to, to make sure that we're, we're checking those boxes and making sure we're. Uh, we're, we're following the process and if, uh, if, uh, the Idaho Association of Counties has done that research, that's great. Uh, certainly defer to them, but there is a lengthy list of, of, uh, of rules to comply. I know that the, just based on listening to the discussion with the board, that there has been some interest in broadband. That's something that's specifically called out as an eligible, as an eligible expense, but there's, uh, obviously some, uh. With all federal dollars, there's gonna be some reporting requirements and some application, things that we've got to be cognizant of. So I will scrutinize that closely. If you can give me some direction on how to focus my time and attention on things that you're not particularly interested in. Or, or don't think that the county will be pursuing, that'll help me narrow my focus on, on what portions or chapters of that rule I can, I can, uh, be most efficient.
And was it broadband, sewer and water?
Correct.
And that was about it. There was no.
Housing is also in there.
Is housing in there?
Yeah, it is. Um. Burn it. Brian, I will bring back to you, we actually received a packet from the Idaho Association of Counties and I don't have it with me. I don't know if you have yours with you.
Let me check.
That specifically called out some of the areas and infrastructure. Uh, the, the administration specifically called out housing, affordable housing projects as infrastructure. And so there was some conversation about that.
Well, I, I like, you know, the stuff that I've read and I haven't been up lately, keeping up with the last week or so, but the legislature, their goal is to say, is going to be if the counties take this money, then we're going to change some formulas, like the Sells-Stacks formula to make, take that away. And that's where they're going to play into this if they get involved in it. According to the attorney general, they, they can't be doing what they're doing now. So it's like one can't sign, he die and the other can't, they both have to sign, he die.
Right.
I don't know how that's going to work, but you know, I think things like, we talked today about maybe some new bathrooms down at the fairgrounds. Things like that, that maybe some of this money would qualify for. I think we probably take advantage of some of that.
At the time, the, the time that I've had to review the, the rule, the, the thing that I've noticed is that regardless of the category of, of funding that you would pursue, there needs to be some sort of a connection to economic, economic impacts that were a result of COVID. And so for, for housing, for example, you'd have to show some sort of a connection that this was not an ongoing, this is not an ongoing issue or problem the counties face, but it's somehow related to or impact, or COVID impacted it and, and you can connect it back and there's some reporting requirements. I think there's some, certainly some flexibility. They, they did make some efforts to say that, that they wanted it to be flexible and they wanted for you not to just completely be boxed into these particular categories. But I did skip over to broadband and the water and sewer infrastructure that, because I know that you had, had spoken about that in prior board meetings. And so the, so the broadband elements or the requirements that the county would have to report back to, to the federal government would be that you, you're providing download and upload speeds that are consistent with future pandemics if we have one where you'd have people tele, teleworking from home and also young children that also had to be in school. So if we, you know, meet those eligibility requirements that we're providing those download and upload speeds and that would provide for an opportunity for teleworking and still keep the economy going, then we'd meet the elements of the broadband, that broadband grant.
Something like the Lakeport site for low-income or employee housing would have worked for that sort of system. We can't really tie it into COVID.
Well, there's a lot of conversation happening at the county level and, and I would like to get my hands around the documents that we were provided.
Yeah.
And get the, the IAX, you know, input. The other counties are looking at it like lost revenue. So we didn't have a fair last year. So we actually could state that we had lost revenue in that section because we didn't have a fair. And, and the revenue that came from that. As far as the housing, part of the issue that we have with housing right now is people leaving the areas that were on such tight COVID restriction that they came to Idaho and they're the ones buying up everything because we had a loose restrictions on COVID. And so other counties are talking about that, you know? How did it really impact us with our housing? And that's truly a metric that we can show.
There's a lot of very defined ways that people could draw a connection to housing and COVID.
Which housing affordability.
Yeah.
Unreachable for.
I mean, the ability and kind of the necessity of, of teleworking and, you know, being able to move to different places. And I think that there, there's a lot of good information that's already come out about like kind of that urban flight mentality.
What happened there? I was trying to think of some of the other ones. They do state that for the public health response, that the COVID, the ARPA funds can pay the county's share of the central district health for so many years. So that might be another place. So the funding that we would actually put toward the central district, district health payment can be taken out of these ARPA funds.
Which is going to go up this year because the counties are taking over that whole program.
Well, as, as kind of you, as you narrow your scope of what you are looking at, that'll help, that, that'll help me give some direction on scrutinizing the, the rule. Again, what was published was an interim rule. They're still seeking public comment and expect that a final rule will come out in the very near future. I don't suspect that there'll be huge changes from the interim rule to the final rule, but we also need to keep in mind that we need to go by the final rule to, to kind of flush out what the requirements are going to be for us. So I, I think the way that I can be the most, the most helpful and resourceful to, to you is once you kind of identify what your wish list, if you want to call it that, with respect to these funds are, then I can, I can evaluate the rule, provide you with a memo and some guidelines on, on what to expect as far as post-funds coming to the county and what the requirements are going to be for you going forward to manage those funds and report back to the government what, what those funds were used for and how they were invested.
Brian, do you, you want to be the contact person for this or somebody talked about somebody needs a driver's license and all that? What are you, what are you guys thinking there?
I, I, I mean, I, I think that would be a little bit outside of the scope of what my typical role would be. Someone, someone within the county system ought to, whether it's the clerk or the treasurer or whoever that would typically manage grants and, or, or federal funds, I can certainly be at the table and advise the legal requirements, but to take on the role and responsibility of managing funds, I think is beyond, beyond what I'm expected or, or should be doing.
Doug, what do you think about?
Donna Peterson out of Payette County, is she treasurer or is she clerk? I think she's treasurer.
Donna is the treasurer.
So I can see she's the one that told us about the hurdles that she faced when she signed up for it.
And one of the other ladies was a treasurer also. I don't know if the clerks are donors or treasurers or.
It's, it's a combination of both at this point in time from what, what I've been hearing about just applying, opening the portal is basically what it's called at this point.
So we need probably then an hour on an upcoming agenda to set priorities for this so that we can give you direction to research. I don't know what.
And it sounds like maybe Gabe or someone from that office is going to have to be the person.
Probably needs to be an elected official, so it would probably need to be Gabe if it's treasurer or Doug if it's clerk.
My thinking is right now is we need to proceed, go ahead and sign up for it and get the process started, but knowing these kinds of things, we're going to see a lot of rule changes before it ever gets to us. Used to qualify, won't qualify. I know with some of the stuff I read that some counties, the businesses come in, could come in and request some of that funding for lost revenue as well. I don't know if I want to go down that trail. We'll have this room full of people pretty quick.
Stabilization funding, economic stabilization for both households and businesses. I mean, households can actually get rent assistance also if that, if it's because of COVID, they've lost those opportunities. And yeah, we're going to have to address all of that. And it's systemic public health and economic challenges, you know, that have been created because of this and the economic challenges are some of the housing ones too, I believe. We, we actually got a full sheet. I'll, I will look for that and reach out and have that available.
I, I remember some, some support for overtime payment for essential workers and, I mean, pretty broad, broad list of.
First year.
Of categories that the, those funds could be used for. Some of them may not even be applicable to what the needs of the county are, what you experienced over the last year here in Valley County, so.
That's the one I think we don't want to go down because the third $10-an-hour bump for a specific period of time and who is essential workers? I mean, we had an entire team here at the courthouse that were, you know, essential. They were left here and so it's not just, you know, that's the one I think that could be really sticky.
Yeah.
The only thing I could think of there that might work would be the health district put on, our health district, put on, I think, 43 additional staff to trace on call and trace COVID-related issues, but I think they use the CARES Act funding to cover that difference. That was really from another form of money and I don't think this really qualifies.
This has got to be from March 1st on.
March 1st of this year?
Yeah.
And we haven't really done anything COVID since March 1st.
So I think that there are some, I want to research the septic sewer issue and water because if we can use it to identify some local housing opportunities, I mean, this really has created a huge challenge in housing in this area with people moving here, just trying to get away from everywhere else and coming to either their second homes. And so, yeah, buying up all the local homes. We need an opportunity to try and counteract that. And if we can use these monies, I definitely want to do that. So I think broadband is important.
I think those would be like my two priorities of what we know right now. Broadband and housing gives me some preliminary marching orders to start putting some parameters together for that. And again, like I said, I, I'll defer to the association of counties and what their direction is on this, but given the, the fluid nature of where we're at with the legislature too, I wouldn't put it past them to come back into session and, and try to tweak some things that may have an impact on what, what you all want to do. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that and let you know, I'm kind of monitoring that as well. So we can, we can see how that will all play out. I think Brian Kane's opinion at the time that the House went into recess, that is if both houses don't, don't agree to, to adjourn, then the default's going to be that they're both, both houses are in, in recess. So they're going to have to come back to sign, he die, it sounds like. And who knows what, what they'll end up doing.
Yeah, who knows in the interim. Especially.
Yep.
Well, this is an action item, so I'm assuming you need a motion to proceed with the application for ARPA funds?
We need to identify, Doug, what is your input to us? Do you think that you should be the one doing that or Gabe? And do we need to identify that?
I mean, really, realistically, it probably should be the clerk's office. So that's what I would propose at this point in time. As Mr. Okey indicated, I, I think there are still some areas that really need to be identified or at least flushed out for lack of better terms to, to make sure that the commissioners are in fact accessing these monies under the guidelines that are being presented. Quite honestly, not to get political, I have my reservations applying for this money specifically when we don't know about long-term funding for SRS, for PILT. I would like to see those things identified by the federal government before this money is just doled out, but that's my own personal opinion, right? And these fundings are available for the commissioners to take into consideration of how, how to expend under the guidelines that are being presented. So with that said, commissioners, I think the, the logical office to handle the application or to open up the portal would probably be the clerk's office.
And I do understand your concern. My, my concern is, is that, you know, the state has questioned whether taking some of these funds and we've had, we will follow obviously our legal guidelines and make sure that we don't stretch that. But if we're not going to use these funds, somebody else is. They're not going to go back and pay down the national debt. I mean, they're going to go to another county or state if we don't utilize this opportunity for our residents. And I want to make sure that we're fleshing out the opportunities that are here for our residents. I concur. I think that the state legislature could try and muddy up the water with touching some of our, our funds as we move forward. I know that there's a lot of conversation around that and the governor's office, you know, hopefully we'll have some conversation with them too. These are one-time monies that should not stop our regular appropriation. The state is mandated, the billion dollars the state is going to receive, they are specifically mandated not to change any property tax legislation, any property reduction. So if they're going to force that on the counties when the state themselves are legally inhibited from doing it, I think that would be a terrible conversation for them to have.
Well, they did it this last year with the Sells-Stacks formula and that's why we ended up paying for health districts. Said you can either pay for it or we're going to take some of your Sells-Stack revenue away from the counties. So that's how they screws to you. But I agree with Sherri. I think we need to proceed and see where this goes and it may come down the end where no, we don't, we don't want to get involved. It's, us is going to be, somewhere else is going to be too prohibitive. And I could just see them coming back saying, well, you took this money, then next year you don't get PILT or you don't get SRS. See, the feds doing that. I'll be careful, but I think we should proceed. I'd entertain that motion.
I'll, I'll go for it. I'll make the motion that we move forward cautiously with the application and researching our interest in the American Rescue Plan Act.
A second.
Move in a second. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, and designate what office to open up the, the portal.
Sorry, I think as, as you said, then we'd defer that to you, the clerk's office.
Second amendment.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. In all favor, if you say.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. But we'll just see what happens. Thank you, do, thanks, Brian. Okay, at this time then, we're going to recess until 1 o'clock. I think we've got everything else done on the morning agenda.